Thursday, June 10th, 2021. We did have our commissioner meeting run over a bit into the 11:30 hour, but this is the meeting that was scheduled, or the work session scheduled for 11:30. And just for the record, the purpose of this meeting is for the Lake County Jail planning and finance work session. The Lake County Commissioners will be in attendance. No action will be taken at this session. With that stated, Commissioner Young, I believe you had recently done a walk tour of the jail, and you've been doing some independent research that I think you wanted to share some information with us about?
Well, I don't want to, I'm sorry I'm eating in front of a starving crew of folks here.
Oh, what's that the teacher would always say? Did you bring enough for everybody?
It's all out there, covered. There's a jail, there's a report done based on, excuse me as I suck my fingers. There's a report done. I can see why, never mind. And it should be, we'll be handing that out in about five minutes or so. There were some edits that we did this morning, and then they're just now updating them. So number one, let's just get started here quickly. I don't feel that Lake County is ready yet to tear down the existing jail and build a new one. Let me just say why real quick here. Given our current budget, we simply can't afford it. The only way we could afford it is with a property tax increase. And right now, our goals need to be economic development, not new government projects. We need to be focused on creating wealth and job opportunities for our citizens. And that's where the future is. You know, as important as a jail might be, it doesn't produce wealth, and although it does create some jobs, it doesn't have a huge ripple effect in the economy. So at this point in time, I would say that we need to back off of this project a bit, as far as actually the full-blown tearing down the existing jail and building another one. Could you just hand this out for me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And focus again on wealth and the economy. Increasing property taxes is a real detriment to economic growth. I think we're all aware of that. People want to relocate into the county, but they have to pay more for a home over time with the property tax increase. Businesses want to build a new business building or move into the county. It becomes more expensive for them. So we want to grow Lake County. We don't want to simply have beautiful new buildings surrounding the square. That'd be nice, and I'm certainly not against a new jail, but right now, it's simply not affordable. Also, I believe there's been a problem with the analysis that had been done as to the need for a new building. And I think we need a more neutral source, if you will. I've done a little bit of research. More needs to be done, but working with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Corrections, which is our state watchdog for jails, they have established standards throughout the state for the proper operation of the buildings and for the buildings themselves. Excuse me. They produce annual support, annual reports from annual visits that they conduct at each of our jails throughout the state, and there's hundreds of them. But these are the folks that are mandated through the revised code to handle this function. That's their job. And they do it dutifully, and they do it well. We did pay a private company to do an analysis for us. I believe we put them in a compromised position. You know, they do business currently in Lake County. They design and build jails. Obviously, to tell them to do the analysis of whether we need a new jail puts them once again in a compromised position. It'd be hard for, for me, I knew if I, if I built jails and someone were to come to me and say, do an analysis, do I need to build a new jail? And by the way, when, when we put this up for bid, you can bid on it, it'd be hard for me to not feel just a bit conflicted, if you will. Now, one of the arguments we've heard is that the jail is currently overcrowded. And having toured it, I get a feel for that. I do get a feel for that. But again, in the analysis, looking at the reports we have, the annual reports from the ODRC, it's pretty clear that our jail is not, by their definition, which is really the only definition that counts for overcrowding. You can look at the table in the study that is handed out on page two, you can see that the capacity for our jail, according to the state agency, is 429 inmates. We haven't, we haven't hit anything near that, at least since 2015, excuse me, unless we had, unless we hit that figure in 2019, which, 2019, which I, I know was nowhere near 429, but I don't know exactly what that figure was from the DRC. So we're definitely not overcrowded, nowhere near overcrowded. Other jails in the area are overcrowded, and that's clearly reported in each of the annual reports. So it isn't as if the DRC is timid or shy about pointing out deficiencies in the, in our local jails. No such deficiency was ever mentioned in the Lake County Jail, at least not that I could find. I did look at quite a few of the reports. Another reason that's been offered as to why we should build a new jail is that the old one, built in 1990, is poorly constructed, poorly designed, and out of date. Now, it may have been poorly constructed. I can't attest to that. But once again, when you reference the state experts on jails, the DRC, their inspection reports, although they point out big problems with other facilities throughout the region, big problems in Euclid, big problems in Ashdabula with the Cleveland House of Corrections, big problems traced back to the age and layout of the building. Once again, not timid. They lay it on the line. You know, if you look at the Ashdabula report, for instance, and I have references to it in here on, maybe page four, the Ashdabula County Jail. You can see, number one...
Sir, I only have three pages.
Well, let's see here. There you go. Ashdabula County there.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry about that.
Claudia, Jen, do you have?
I only have three pages as well.
Three pages? Jen? Jason, could you get Jen real quick?
I think it's on, the Ashdabula quote in my packet's on page three. Maybe it's a Page Nation.
There should be...
Okay, so the font size has been reduced.
Yeah, I have a different font size here.
Okay, so the font size has been reduced, so we've got page four has been condensed. Page four is represented on page three.
I see. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's okay. It's okay. In the interest, though, of, and I appreciate the large type you got there, if we could maybe go by the headings, that would be very helpful so we can kind of keep up with that. Acceptable?
Smart.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So you're referring to?
So you can see.
Ashdabula County Jail?
Ashdabula County Jail, yeah. Page three.
Copy. Thank you.
You can see I have it underlined continually, "The age and layout of the existing facility does not provide an established jail security perimeter. The jail does not have secure booking and release area. This is due to the age and layout of the existing facility. The age and layout does not provide two-way communication. The age and layout of the existing facility, of the existing jail facility does not provide adequate lighting." So again, these watchdogs are not timid about pointing out shortfalls. In the Lake County Jail, there's no mention of anything related to this, of any facility problem. When I talked to them about it, and I told them what we were considering doing, they were surprised. They said that they hadn't gotten any calls from Lake County. No one had mentioned a problem of any sort. And that would be something they would expect if the building was indeed in such dire straits. They do offer those services. They said they'd be willing to come up anytime, take a tour of the building with us, find out what our concerns are, give us expert input. Not that we don't have experts now, but a neutral third party is something to be valued. There's, what is it? There's much wisdom with many counselors. An old quote from the Bible, which I value. So frankly, I don't see why we wouldn't avail ourselves of such free services from folks who do jail analysis throughout the, throughout the whole state. And this is what they do, and they do it extremely well, from what I'm told. So in having read all of these, having read all of these, that's an exaggeration, having read a lot of the inspection reports, again, it's clear that these folks' job is to point out deficiencies of any sort. And we should be quite proud of our jail because they haven't found deficiencies with the Lake County Jail. At the same time, there are people that respond to questions, concerns, quandaries that jails find themselves in. And they stress that with me, that they're ready to come out upon request and work with us to see what we can do to bring our jail up to speed. And I just want to read quickly something here at the end, my little tirade here. So I just want to make it clear, I'm not opposed to building a new jail due to any kind of ideological distaste of the role jails play in our society. It's obvious jails play a necessary role in protecting the property and lives of our citizens. I applaud the efforts of our sheriff, our courts, in reducing the number of people sentenced to extended jail time. Also, having toured the jail, I agree that maintenance is required in areas such as the leaking roof, plumbing problems. However, having read the ODRC jail inspection reports that do not reference any problems with our jail, having considered the hardships to which many of our citizens would be subjected by a property tax increase, the negative impact of higher taxes on economic growth, and the lack of a neutral perspective as to how to improve jail services, that the ODRC stands ready to offer free of charge to Lake County, I cannot support the building of a new jail at this time. So that's where I stand on this issue. And I hope we can invite them in. I'd like to be involved in some of those meetings to at least hear their perspective. Now, they're not going to come in and tell us we need a new jail. That's, that's not their role. But they will tell us if we have any kind of problems that get in the way of the operation of the jail and in the way of the jail fulfilling its role, its meeting all the standards that are required. They were surprised that we had reached a point where a number of us had reached a point where we were actually considering building a new jail, and yet they hadn't been contacted and brought in to any of the discussions. So let's reach out and have a conversation with the folks that seem to really understand all these issues in depth and from a very, again, neutral perspective. So thanks for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff, anything you want to contribute or ask?
Well, as I've tried to explain to...
Your microphone, sir? Thank you, sir.
If I tried to explain to Commissioner Young repeatedly, the figures that he is receiving from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation, specifically the Bureau of Adult Detention, are one-day snapshots of the Lake County Adult Detention Facility. It's not our annual average or our daily average of our Lake County jail population. It's a one-day snapshot. And so those are the figures they record, and they're the figures that we give them. So when they come in on a particular day, as an example, in 2015, our population was 337 inmates on that day. In reality, our annual average per day in 2015 was actually 329, which was eight inmates less a day than what the DRC was showing. However, when they came in in 2018, their daily average was 328 for that particular day. Our annual average that year, the average population was 349. During COVID in 2020, when the courts substantially cut back as well as lockdowns in our, in our area and limitations on movement, had they come in on one particular day in 2020, our average daily population for that day would have been 200 inmates. Today, our population stands at 330 inmates. So within roughly a few months, our population rose from 200 inmates per day to 330 inmates. When you look at the average that they showed, the DRC capacity is 429. Our jail was designed and built to house 353 inmates. At one point, our average daily population was 385 inmates. We built a minimum-security jail to reduce that population, and we moved inmates out to Blaise Nemeth, approximately 70 inmates a day. When the, we went through our financial crisis 2008, 2009 as a county, we closed the minimum-security jail in 2010, and we brought about, at that time, 53 inmates back to the main jail. The only way we could do that and qualify as certified under the Bureau of Adult Detention, we had to ask for a variance. And in 2010, we were given a variance to add 60 beds to our facility by double-bunking our jail facility, which we did. Two years later, a new group came into the Bureau of Adult Detention and said they were revoking the variance. They said we were abusing minimum jail standards and that our population is only 353, since that's what our jail was designed for. We fought that attempt to take away the variance, since we had already closed the minimum-security jail, and we won that argument in court. And so the 429 figure comes from using every bed in the jail possible. The point that's being made in terms of our facility is multifaceted. The very first aspect is that we have a growing Lake County jail population. In 1993, our Lake County inmates, that's Lake County Court inmates, people either serving time, awaiting sentence, or on trial in the Lake County Jail, was 206 inmates. In 2019, we housed 350 Lake County Court inmates. We no longer house any inmates from outside our jurisdictions. If we do, it's a limited number. I think today, we might be housing 10 from the United States Marshal Service to assist them, since we have current openings. As a sheriff's office, as a jail facility, we need to do a number of things, is look into the future, and whether that's five or 10 years. In a jail facility, you're looking at a 10-year view moving forward, because whenever you make a decision, if that decision were be, would be to build a new facility, a new facility takes about four years to be realized, from beginning planning to move-in date, three and a half to four years. So when our county population in a designed facility, designed to house 353 beds, and that is filled, that design is filled with 353 Lake County inmates, we would be remiss not to tell the Commissioner's Office, moving forward, you need to be aware that we have a housing shortage moving forward. When you look at, when I started my career, the Lake County Adult Detention Facility in 1989, we housed 2/3 misdemeanors, low-level offenders, and 1/3 felons from Lake County. Today, we house 2/3 felons, 1/3 misdemeanors. Why that population has shifted is because the Lake County Courts have done extraordinarily well in keeping people out of jail. Now, I know a lot is being talked about today about bail reform and keeping people out of jail. It is a scourge in our major cities across the United States. They are way overcrowded, and it has been abused. The place it has not been abused is in the Lake County Court Systems. Both our common police courts and our municipal courts have worked very hard to keep people out of jail regardless of their ability to pay. So when you go to the arraignments in Lake County, judges are very quick to provide personal bonds, which means there's no money required to assure your appearance in court, unless the law specifically says it's required. As an example, if you're arrested for domestic violence, you're not granted bail till you appear in court. And then there are restrictions based on the person's previous records. A lot of people that we have serving time in our jail have continually violated probation, leaving the judges little discretion as to keep them out of jail. In fact, at a recent judges' meeting, the common police court judges were upset as us, as a sheriff's office, that we haven't spoken up more widely in terms of these meetings, that they do not house people that should not be in jail. They pointed out, Judge Lucci pointed out, that less than 1% of the people in common police court at the present time are incarcerated in the facility. The majority of people, he said, are in our community because we have worked so hard to grant them the ability to stay out of jail. That's what's kept our population down. Do I believe in bail reform? Absolutely, as does everyone at the Lake County Sheriff's Office. Bail reform is essential, but I don't see it making a dramatic effect in Lake County when bail reform comes about because we've been practicing it for the last 15 years or more with the Lake County judges. Overcrowding is not something we're experiencing today because we've taken measures to combat that. We have taken measures where we've double-bunked our facility, where we've granted bonding, where we've given personal bonds to keep people out of jail. The point we have to relay to the Commissioner's Office is moving forward... The point we have to relay to the Commissioner's Office is moving forward, we're going to run out of space. And you don't wait till you run out of space to be able to tell people, we should have decided this four years ago. I was neglectful that I didn't inform the Commissioner's Office of what we're looking at. The second aspect that we're looking at is an aging building. A study done in 2013, then a study done in 2014, and a study done in 2019 have all brought in engineers who have looked at our building and said it is end of life. End of life in terms of our heating and air conditioning, end of life on piping. A recent study shows where all the bricks are being pushed off the, off the building. In fact, Lake County, reacting to that, recently had a firm come in to do some tuck pointing in terms of the building to try to stave off some of that deterioration that's going on. And it has temporarily, but they also said, listen, every window needs replaced in here. Every brick needs to come off this building and be re-tuck pointed beneath. The roof needs to be replaced. Your piping is beyond end of life and is unreparable. In fact, in a recent study that was done, the study said, "The current structure makes it nearly impossible to make interior alterations to the sheriff's office to respond to new requirements in law, events in the community, and addressing changing operational strategies." We have made lots of alterations. The telecommunications department, the buildings and grounds department need to be greatly applauded for maintaining this building for as long as it has been deteriorating and keeping that building going. That's what we presented through those studies to the Commissioner's Office. We've never said at, at some point that we can't house the inmates that we're housing. We can. We continually do that. But you can't put a person in every cell. You can't put, well, we have three open female beds, so let's just throw three males in there. That never works out. You can't put people who don't have mental illness in with other mentally ill individuals. You can't, as a norm, use isolation beds, isolation housing for extended period of times without it being disciplinary and being in violation of state standards. Every year, Captain Brooks, who sits to my left here, handles state jail inspections and handles all, the, the state comes in not only to look at physical plant, but also look in terms of policies and procedures, how you handle people, use supports, medical programs, all those different aspects to verify the minimum amount you, is necessary for you to do. Minimum is not necessarily the best. We've always maintained standards much higher in Lake County than the minimum standards. If you were to visit other facilities, as Commissioner Young references, the Cleveland House of Corrections, Euclid City Jail, I can name lots of facilities in Ohio that if you were to go there, they qualify as minimum jail standards, but you'd be shocked at their operations. You go to Kioga County Jail, the amount of garbage piled up in people's cells is enormous. We believe that Lake County residents deserve better. Our job as a jail facility is not to punish people, it's to house them. It's the role of the courts to punish. But we need to house them safely and at the same time be physically, fiscally responsible to the citizens of Lake County in letting them know where their buildings are at and what to look for moving forward. And if you have any questions in terms of minimum jail standards, in the review of those, Captain Brooks is an expert in this area with over 37 years of experience who could highlight and speak with expertise on any of those issues.
I, I just, real quickly, just in response, I trust what you're saying. I've toured your, I've toured the jail and I've read these inspection reports. And I can just see by the verbiage from the inspection reports that other jails have problems that you don't have because you handle the facility responsibly and diligently. But you can see what I'm dealing with here. You know, we're talking about a 70 to 100 million dollar project, the largest capital project in the history of Lake County. And when we look at the reports from the state watchdogs, again, according to them, the supposed experts, nowhere near overcrowded. Now, the 429 is, is their figure. That's the capacity figure, the one we fought for apparently. So nowhere, nowhere near overcrowded according to the experts. And if you look at the years reported that I have, and I know there's a lot more years than this and you have a lot more data than I have here, but 2015, 337, 2016, it went up, 365, 2017, 329, 2018, 328. 2019, they don't have a figure from DRC. 2020, down to 300. And that was partly COVID, I'm sure. But nowhere near overpopulated. And no mention of
But Commissioner, again-
Go ahead.
It's a one-day snapshot. You keep going back to these figures.
But it's one day out of every year.
If I used your reasoning here, with all due respect, you shouldn't charge a dime in taxes next year to Lake County residents because you're going to get $44 million from the government every year free.
I see what you're saying.
Isn't that going to happen every, oh, wait a minute, that's an exception. It was just 2020. It was a one-time thing.
Sheriff, this is every year-
This is a one-day population look.
But every year they're under the capacity, well under it, way under it. And then when it comes to the facility itself, again, you look at other facilities in the area continually cited for facility problems. Nothing in Lake County. You know, all these engineers come in and tell you that, you know, you need all-new windows, you need you need new brick protections, et cetera. And yet, when the state comes in, they see nothing. There's no mention made to them that there's a facility problem of any sort. It's difficult for me then to stand up and say, people of Lake County, we're going to take the money out of your pocket. We're going to build a new jail in spite of the fact that the, the experts in the state of Ohio have no evidence to indicate or suggest in any way, not even a suggestion, that we need a new facility. And there they are every year inspecting and reporting. And yet, there's nothing in any of the reports that speak to what you're describing. So that's, that's the quandary that I'm in.
Mr. President?
Sir.
So in the course of our appropriately public discussions on the need of the jail facility going forward, I've heard three critiques of the sheriff's proposal that a new jail is needed from different places. And the first that I wanted to dismiss, which Commissioner Young has also dismissed, is that we should defund the police. The police are a problem. No one here is seriously entertaining that. I don't care whether or not our sheriff's department, law enforcement, or police are popular. I support them regardless and I know that everyone at this deus does. So I want to agree with Commissioner Young that whether anyone supports the idea of building a new adult detention facility or not, I, I think I say with confidence that no one here wants to defund the police. Second, I hear the, the concern that jails are unnecessary, that we can move beyond them or dramatically reduce the need for them. But I think that that ignores the fact that our judges in Lake County, as the sheriff has said, have already implemented many of the reforms that the rest of the state are catching up to. Bail reform makes a big difference when you have judges that are imposing significant and difficult-to-meet obligations that do disproportionately impact poor and middle-class populations. But the judges in Lake County, like Judge Lucci, have worked very hard to already address those issues of justice. So I applaud our Cleveland Marshall Chief Justice O'Connor and others who are trying to push this for all of Ohio. But I think that the leaders here in Lake County have already done much of that work, which is not to say we can't all continue to strive to do better. We're called to do that. But I don't think we're going to see a sea change in the Lake County justice system when everyone else catches up to our example. So that leaves, that leaves the concern that Commissioner Young has expressed to us that a new jail is unnecessary because the old facility is either capable of meeting our needs for the long term or with a modest expense can provide for those needs going forward. I certainly hear, I certainly hear the concern that a new jail facility would be expensive. I think that's certainly a point no one can debate. Commissioner Young says 70 to 100 million. I've heard 60 to 100 million. I think everyone's numbers are in the same ballpark and that would be the largest capital project that our county has, has stepped up to, to this point. I think that our budget director, Mike Matus, would agree with me. He's nodding. And that's a very significant investment. But it's been said to me many times and I've since confirmed, sitting at this deus, that it's a job of commissioners to deal with buildings and budgets. And I've had experience with both. I don't pretend to be an architect, but I have managed my own rental bill, business. I have worked on plumbing, put in doors, walked on roofs, installed windows. I can recognize issues when I see them. And I'm grateful, just as Commissioner Young was given the opportunity, so too the sheriff, as well as Captain Brooks and Chief Deputy Sherwood. And I really want to acknowledge you both for joining us today, gave me a full tour of the jail facility. And while I don't pretend to have the expertise of Mark Eiffelis in Lake County Buildings and Grounds and I certainly don't have the expertise of Paul Stefanco and our telecommunications department, which are our two county agencies responsible for the jail, I can tell you that there is a serious and systemic problem with the jail facilities. Number one, as Commissioner Young acknowledges, the roof is in very poor repair. A flat roof in northeast Ohio is a terrible idea on virtually any building. And it's disappointing to me that prior fiduciaries who were tasked with husbanding our budget would build a jail facility with a flat roof because for the entire life of the facility, we've dealt with water leaking and other problems related to that roof. And that water damage is systemic and throughout the entire building. There's a reason why the walls are bowing out. There's a reason why we have plumbing issues. It's because of rust that's literally dripping down from the roof through the floors into the concrete-encased plumbing. And you're saying, "Concrete-encased? That sounds like a terrible idea." Well, like I said, as the proud owner of Plechnik Reel Properties LLC, which once managed a grand total of six apartments, I can tell you that concrete-in-place-encased plumbing is a terrible idea. I had one, I had one pipe underneath a concrete driveway and let me tell you, it's very expensive to bust up concrete to replace a trap or a pipe. That is the entire jail facility. So every time we have water damage and a rusted-out pipe from this roof, we have to go in, jackhammer, or otherwise break up concrete to replace pipes. So to say that we need to maintain some plumbing issues in the roof is true, but we have to understand that's a very costly, ongoing problem and it will not be a modest cost. In addition, as if there weren't enough problems with water damage, there are no drains on the floors of the jail. There are no drains. And that's a problem for two reasons. Number one, we have a significant amount of water incoming from the roof, which was poorly constructed, despite the best maintenance we could do. And because anyone familiar with jail facilities, and I'm looking to Captain Brooks to confirm or, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, there's often a problem where an inmate breaks, damages, an item of plumbing. Sometimes it's accidental, sometimes it's on purpose, but that can result in a lot of water being sprayed out over an area. Now, if you've ever been in a kitchen, and my first job was in the monastery kitchen at Belmont Abbey, every well-built kitchen has a drain in the floor because if there is a spill, which is inevitable in a facility with a lot of bathrooms or kitchens, or a bad roof, you have water damage unless there's a drain to absorb that. There are no drains on any of the floors in the jail that I'm familiar with from my tour. And that means whether it's water coming down from the roof from a rain event or it's an inmate or an accident, when there's a significant amount of water released, this water has nowhere to go but into the walls, which causes dramatic damage, not just to the plumbing, but to the entire jail facility. And I think it's really commendable how Captain Brooks, how Chief Jeopardy, Chief Deputy Sherwood have gone above and beyond with this facility to maintain it by working hand-in-hand with Lake County Buildings and Grounds and telecommunications. And the fact that there are no complaints from the Ohio Department of Corrections, I think, is really a testament to your work. It's not that the building is in perfect condition. It's that everyone has come together to go above and beyond to make it work as best they could. I know there have been creative solutions such as when a showerhead was busted, literally a rubber, a rubber pipe with a hose have been used to reroute the water because there are no drains on the floor to reroute it as quickly as possible into a sink or a drain or a toilet to try to avoid more damage. But obviously, that takes a human being to run up to the busted plumbing to stick the hose on and to stop it as soon as possible. But in the meanwhile, you have sitting water, which is, you know, obviously not good for the health of all those there, that is slowly seeping down floor to floor to floor. And once it gets in the walls, there's no way in that concrete-encased plumbing to stop it until it drains all the way through, damaging every single floor as it goes. And so I, I, I just want to emphasize that to say there's a plumbing and a roof problem doesn't fully, doesn't fully state just what a big problem that is. And to fully replace that roof and more so to actually have a slanted roof that would prevent some of this damage in the future would be a huge capital cost. So if we're talking about fixing or rebuilding the jail to get it to like-new standards, I think we're talking about a similar cost to building an entire new facility. And that might be a viable option if we are confident that our facility is large enough for the next 60 years. But we're hearing from the person who has served in Captain Brooks's role and Chief Deputy Sherwood's role before becoming our sheriff, so someone who's managed this jail in different leadership capacities now for decades, that all indicators are that we're going to need more, not less, space. So if we make tens of millions of dollars of investment in this facility to not only fix the roof, but to put a slanted roof on the facility, to remove all the concrete around the plumbing, if that's even physically possible, to install drains on each floor and then to repair all the mold and other damage that this building has incurred over the decades that it suffered under the old roof and plumbing system, even if we were able to achieve all of that, then if our population goes over a limit, we come back to the table and say that we're going to need to spend 30 or 40 million dollars to try to build an addition or a supplemental jail. And I think that that's a problem that we have to bear in mind. We can't pretend that it will be free to rebuild the current jail and we cannot pretend that population in jails stays static. We have seen a trend line as long as, as long as this jail has been there and previous jails upward, not because of unreasonable sentences from judges. In fact, our judges have given more and more modest prison sentences and have emphasized that incarceration should be reserved for violent crimes, for felons, and for people who simply do not respect the law. If you violate probation one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight times, if you simply refuse to show up to court, it's not just the judge's discretion, it's the law that says you're going to jail. And it has to be that case because if you can simply ignore the law with respect to misdemeanors, there is no law with respect to misdemeanors. And there are very serious misdemeanors in the code. There are very serious crimes that don't rise to a level of felony and it would be wrong not to enforce on some level those crimes. We should be more understanding and we should recognize they're not as serious. But someone who won't take responsibility, who ignores their court dates over and over again, I don't just, I don't just say, "Okay, I support the judge." just say, "Okay, I support the judges in showing the rule of law in those cases." That's the right decision to make. So I think realistically, we're given three fundamental options as commissioners. Commissioner Young suggested one of them. We can attempt to rebuild the jail, which I want to emphasize would be a very expensive project. We're talking tens of millions of dollars, no matter which of these alternatives. And I see our Budget Director nodding his head. We're not going to do this for a few hundred thousand or a few million. If we decide to rebuild the Lake County Jail, put a new roof on, redo the plumbing, remove the concrete, install drains on every floor, replace all the damage, and upgrade the facilities, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars. We'd need a full study to determine exactly how much, but the price tag is not going to be considerably lower than building a new jail. We can build a new jail, which is the recommendation of our Sheriff's Office, or we can build multiple new jails. We've heard some municipal officials suggest that we could have three, four, five jails, and that is an option. But I'm looking to our Budget Director again, even if we're talking about the same total number of inmates, I am fairly confident in saying that three jails would cost more than one. And I see the nod of the head, would the sheriff agree? That three jails would cost more than one, even if they were smaller. Yeah. So, alternative number one, we rebuild the jail, in which case we have the same limited capacity, and realistically, a useful life that might extend for five or 10 more years. To get it to actual like-new standards is probably impossible. We can build a new jail, which would give us a useful life, assuming it was built well, assuming that the investment was done well, of 50 to 60 years. Or we can build three new jails that would also give us 50 to 60 years. Now, I don't think there's an appetite from anyone at the STEAS to build three jails, or four jails, or five jails. I think I'm right, and I'm open to being corrected. So I think option number three is not something anyone's interested in. So we're seriously debating here today, do we rebuild the Lake County Jail to get five to 10 more years of useful life with no added capacity, assuming a larger population? Or do we build a new jail that anticipates the population that our sheriff and his staff, his deputies believe is likely for the foreseeable future? And if we do that, we should have 50 to 60 years of useful life in that facility, assuming that we husband that resource, we build it right, and we take care of it. And I think the fact that we've been able to use this facility, which I do believe, from having personally toured it like Commissioner Young, is not well-built. I do believe that it's a testament to the people who have taken care of the facility that we do not have these violations. I personally think that the cost per year is what we need to look at. I think we need to consider whether rebuilding the jail or building a new jail is more fiscally responsible, which is the more expensive alternative per year. And in that calculation, we need to consider capacity for a second reason. While we're very conservative when it comes to projections, if you look at the cost of the old jail, poorly built as it was, the one positive I can point to is that most of that cost was ultimately reimbursed to the county by taking business from the federal marshals. And what I mean by that is that the federal marshals do ask local jails and prisons to house inmates and pay us for that service. And the old jail was largely paid for. There's an increased demand right now. I announced at a previous meeting that our sheriff had shared that Jaga had accepted a contract for 100 inmates from the federal marshals per day. And in all likelihood, if we had excess capacity, we could take it. Right now, we essentially are at full capacity. As the sheriff said, it's true that our numbers don't go up to 429. But 429 is with a variance, a variance that the state would like to revoke, and may revoke in the future as standards continue to rise. And I think appropriately so. We've heard from the public many times that we have to have access to justice, and we have to treat people fairly. Some folks will go to jail, whether we like it or not. That is the fact. But I agree with our sheriff that Lake County deserves better than the minimum standards. Cuyahoga County Jail wasn't shut down, but 13 people died in the last several years in that facility. I don't care if that passes the law. That is not acceptable. And the people who manage that jail, including county government, should be ashamed of that result. Ultimately, family and friends of our residents, our neighbors, are going to be in that facility. You're right, Sheriff, it's the judge's job to decide what's just punishment, working with our county prosecutor's office and working through the justice system. And when that ruling comes down, it's not up to you to hurt or punish those people. It's up to you to make sure that everyone in that facility is safe and treated with humanity. If our standard is to have people die in that facility on a regular basis, because it's out of date, and it's a model that's geared towards incarceration with no care or concern for the people there, we are doing a disservice to our family, to our neighbors, to our friends who made mistakes. Some of those mistakes are pure evil, and some of those people are truly dangerous. But many of them are troubled. Many of them need help, and many of them can do better if they're given a chance. We know that there's no such thing as real mental health, real facilities to deal with drug abuse and addiction until it gets completely out of control, in which case jail is where most people end up. That's a sad testament to society, and our commissioner's office can't change that single-handedly. But where we can make a contribution to the effort to do better is to make sure that when people are forced to be incarcerated, that we have a facility that treats them humanely, keeps them safe, and hopefully has opportunities to rehabilitate rather than just incarcerate. The current jail facility can barely handle the task of keeping people in a cell without being harmed. Because of some really heroic efforts from our corrections officers who put themselves in line and in risk, we haven't had the catastrophes that Cuyahoga County has. But I don't know that it's fair to expect them to continue to do that. When you walk down the hall and you see the offices, the desks of our corrections officers in a hall that also has access to inmates, what happens if one of those inmates decides that today's the day they're going to hurt someone? Whether because it's of their intent or because they're troubled, that corrections officer is in harm's way. We should not have a facility where there are desks in a hallway where inmates have access, but we are dealing with a capacity issue. As the sheriff said, we can't fill every room. You can't put a man in a woman's facility. I know today there's great debate over who's a man and who's a woman, but in jail, we don't have the luxury of those debates. We need to keep people safe, and we need to follow the law. That's what the corrections officers have to do. They can't mix male and female populations. They can't mix the mentally ill with someone who's in there for a more minor offense and risk that either of them are harmed by the other. That's a disservice to both. So I really want to say that the state hasn't stepped in and said there's violations. That is a right praise to our deputies, to our sheriff's office, for their work. It doesn't mean that the building is perfect. It means extraordinary efforts have been made. But what we're hearing from them is, we're reaching our limit. Unless, if I am completely mishearing our sheriff right now, you're saying to us, you're reaching the limit. You're doing everything you can, you care deeply, and you're never going to stop trying. You're never going to say, "It's impossible." Let it happen. You're going to fight with the resources you're given to treat people as humanely as possible and to keep them safe, but ultimately, you can only juggle so much, and eventually the balls will be dropped. Not because anyone hasn't done their best, but because we're giving a harder and harder task to the people who are in harm's way every day. I hear from residents that our corrections officers aren't paid enough. I bet they're right. But pay isn't everything. A safe work environment is a big part of the equation, too. I'd rather be paid a little bit less and be treated with decency and respect, and know that every day I walk in the building, I'll walk out safely, than paid a little bit more and ask myself, "Am I coming home tonight?" That's me, and I've never been in a situation like that. Our deputies go into that jail every day, having to ask themselves, "Are they safe or not?" It's not just the inmates we need to think about. When we talk about supporting police and law enforcement, it's very easy to say rah-rah, but this is a rubber-hits-the-road decision. Do we really support law enforcement? Do we care about the fact that they're in harm's way? I'm not saying that there is a fundamentally unworkable or evil alternative, though. I think we could put a lot of money. I think we could spend 50, 40 million dollars and rebuild that jail. But what happens when the sheriff comes back and says, "Four years later, I told you so." We need 50 more beds. It's going to cost you 20 to 30 million dollars to build this addition. We go, "Whoops, we could have had a brand-new jail for 60 to 100 million dollars, but now we've spent 50 million rebuilding the old jail, and we've got to spend another 30 million on an addition. But the old part of the jail will only last for 10 years, the addition will last for goodness knows another 50 or 60. In 10 years, we're going to have a fiscal emergency." Because we'll have spent the money we could have used to build a long-term facility that will last a generation on a temporary fix that will cost just as much when you consider the reality that unless of our sheriff, who's managed this jail now longer than some people have been alive, unless if he's completely wrong, we're going to have to build an addition in the not-too-distant future. And, you know, I want to say this not to be political in any way, shape, or form. I have built yard signs with wood for Commissioner Ron Young, and I will build more again if he decides to run for reelection. I will endorse and support you. And I think that your push and your determination to examine every expense and expenditure, whether it's a $3.51 oil filter, or a 60 to 100 million dollar jail project, I think that's critical. I think fiscal responsibility is a core value that commissioners have to have because we're about budgets. But we're statutorily required to provide safe buildings that serve the county function. And so it's our challenge to find out how to pay for it. The sheriff's job is to say, "We need it. Here's why we need it, and here's the consequences if we don't get it." Cuyahoga ignored the warning signs. They're on TV. There are documentaries on Netflix where you can watch. There are podcasts you can listen to. There are literally pop-up practicums and courses taught at law schools about how bad the Cuyahoga County justice system is. I do not want, 10 years from now, people to say that Professor Commissioner Plechnik made Lake County into Cuyahoga because he thought, in the short term, he could save some money. I don't believe we should raise property taxes. I've heard the public loud and clear, and I can say that I have never, not once, voted to raise taxes. And by the way, some people split hairs. They say, "Well, I raised one tax, I cut another, and in between the two, I cut the taxes in the net." I can say, "I have never raised taxes, not one penny, not in one instance." And I have no appetite to do it. I think it's my job as a commissioner to find every way possible to pay for what we are legally required to provide, and we are legally required to provide for a facility for those people who are a danger to society and who have broken the law. We're required to do that. It's not our option. And it's my job to find a way to pay for that without putting a burden on the taxpayer. And I know that Commissioner Young is committed to that. I know that President Hamercheck is committed to that. I'll quote him, "I have no appetite for a new tax." That's our president. So I agree that that should be a huge part of our work. It is our work. It's not the sheriff's job to find this money. It's his job to work with what we're able to provide in taxpayer support. But we have to do the hard work of finding the money. And we can't say, "It's too hard to find the money, ergo, no jail." Or, "It's too hard to find the money, ergo, let's put a Band-Aid on it," and then the next board of commissioners can figure out the tough choice when they find out that the sheriff was right and that we need another 50 beds. Now, I'm hopeful, I'm very hopeful, because of the incredible staff that Sheriff Liam Bruno and his predecessor, Sheriff Dunlap, have pulled around him, that you will be able to help us in not just constructing a facility that can last for 60 years, in not just finding the right capacity so that we do not have to add to that facility at any point in that time, but also to do what your predecessors have done and try, when it's possible, to use any excess capacity we have in the early years, because you have to build excess capacity in the early years of a facility when you see an upward population curve, to pay for the jail along the way. Now, I'm not coming at it with the expectation that that's a guarantee, or that we can predict what that revenue flow will be. But it will be more than zero. And I know that the sheriff will be aggressive and hard-working in contributing to that bottom line. And I can tell you, as a commissioner, I will segue that money off. That would automatically go into the general fund, and I know our Budget Director would love to see flexibility there. But here's where I will be rigid. If I see money coming into the jail because we have a contract with the federal marshals, because we have a contract with another county or facility, that money stays with law enforcement and in that jail. Nobody gets to dip their hands into it in a boom year. That gets put to the side, because it should go to pay for the facility. And I personally believe that with all of us working together as a team, as cheap as we are, the nicer term is fiscally responsible, that we can pay for this jail without the need to raise taxes. Now, that's our job. It's not the sheriff's job. It's not the judge's job. We can't push it off on anyone else. But I am confident that they will be strong partners in this. I know I've said a lot, but this is the biggest capital project that we have considered as a county. And even if I'm blessed to serve on this commission with Commissioners Young and President Hamercheck for 30 years, even if that were to happen, in all likelihood, this will be the biggest vote we take. So I don't think it's wrong, in a work session where the public is listening and cares about our reasons, to take the time to fully explain my position. I think we all need to. And I'll close by saying this.
I need to hear from you. I need to hear from you. I want to respond to him for a minute.
I 100%, 100% take responsibility for my vote. I do my homework. As a tax professor, I know budgets. As a former small-business person who had to maintain buildings with his own two hands, I know enough about plumbing and roofs and the practicalities that our deputies and sheriff's office are dealing with to see an issue in front of me. So I'm not abdicating my responsibility. I support building a new jail because I think it is the most fiscally responsible option. I think it is the lowest cost per year to the taxpayer. But in weighing that and making that decision on my own, I do put heavy weight on the opinion of our sheriff Frank Liam Bruno, of the captain who manages the jail, of the chief deputy who works in the leadership to maintain that safety and that balance of the staff. And it only takes the conclusion I come to on my own and makes it all the more firm. I believe that the most fiscally responsible alternative, the lowest cost per year, the safest result for law enforcement and our deputies, as well as our inmates, who we are fiduciaries of as well, is to build a new jail. And I stand open to being corrected, but I have not heard one fact, figure, or statistic that shows that it would be cheaper to rebuild the old jail than to build a new one when you consider the useful life of a properly-built new jail. And I would just like to ask, as my final statement, what say you, Sheriff?
I agree. Do you want to... No, actually.
Microphone, please.
I agree. We need a new jail. I think you and the sheriff have pointed out a lot of issues that we have. The state does know that we were thinking about a new jail. I talked to my jail inspector about that.
Joel?
Yes. So they weren't notified. But we don't do anything until it's approved. Once it's on paper, then we can approach them. But until then, we can't.
And not to argue, but maybe I just heard something different, but he told me they were available to come up, even now.
Right. We have discussed that.
Before we have anything on paper.
Joel and I have discussed that, yes.
He would bring the state, I forget his name now.
John Adams?
No, the gentleman that is in charge of structure and the actual facility itself.
Yes, I can't think of his name. I know who you're talking about, yes.
Yeah, anyway. He'd come up with them, and they would help us out even at this point. But go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, it's just, I think we... No, it's just, I think we need a new jail. You have 20 inmates, 18 to 20, in one range or housing unit that's designed for 12. Leads to a lot of fights. Not enough room.
Oh, yeah.
Not enough square footage. So we are overcrowded. I mean, you know, the state may not say it or put it on paper, but we are. When you're stepping over people that are sleeping on the floor, that's overcrowded because we don't have a bed for them.
Sure sounds like it.
Yes.
I wonder why they don't report. They report it all over. I mean, so many different facilities are reported as having overcrowding and different cell areas and et cetera, but it's, well, go ahead.
Yeah, we weren't designed to hold 70 to 100 females, but we do. We put them on the floor if we have to. And I don't have a problem saying this, you know, when you put a bunch of women together, things don't always work out.
And you're the only one in this room who could say that. Thank you.
So we wind up locking them down a lot, you know? Lock them down. If they can't get along, lock them down. And that's not the answer. But sometimes we have to do that.
Just in reference to what John was saying, and I'm going to be very short. I appreciate your passion, and I agree with you. If we can build a new jail without raising taxes, I'm with you 100%, just based upon the sheriff's recommendation. Again, it's a bit of a quandary because we're not hearing what I expected to hear from the state in reference to this issue. Part of the process, I would hope, would be that we'd bring these folks up here to talk to us about our needs and about the facility and all the issues surrounding that, whether remodeling could potentially be a solution. I never heard a figure as high as 40,000, but I don't know. We should start calling you probably Professor Commissioner Engineer, by the way you described the situation at the building. I don't know about revoking the variance, that sort of thing. I do know that an increase in taxes can carry a pretty heavy weight for a lot of people who are challenged, a lot of seniors on a fixed income, a lot of poor households throughout the county. And maybe we do need more beds even now, even though we're not hearing anything from outside Lake County about overcrowding, nonetheless, the people that live in that environment on a continual basis recognize a need, and I can't discount that. I trust these people. But I don't see why in the world we wouldn't bring up folks that can give us free input of some sort. Yeah, and at least listen to them. And I think we could accomplish that within the next 30 days or so, perhaps even less, where they could be here and have a discussion. So at any rate, I agree with you. If we can build it without a tax increase, I'm with you.
One other point to add to you, Commissioner. You had talked about a jail remodel. So if we were to, the last estimate we had to fix up the current building without putting on a new roof was about 30 million. If we added a addition, say it was a $20 million addition, you had 50 million.
Now add the roof.
Well, not only add the roof, but there are jails that have been built that have never opened because they don't have sufficient income to pay for staffing. When we were looking at an addition, we said we would have to add 12 to 15 people to staff that. The cost of that over 30 years would be 40 to 50 million dollars more in terms of operational costs than just building cost. So when you factor that into the addition, plus remodeling a building that's only going to be good for 10 or 15 years on an update, the cost will exceed 100 million dollars.
And Sheriff, my understanding to follow on your point is that a goal in constructing a new facility would be to use space more efficiently so that you could open doors to central areas and hallways without the need for a deputy to escort a prisoner. There's two benefits to that. The deputy is safer because there's less exposure to potentially violent inmates, but it also means that you don't need more deputies to escort inmates from place to place. A properly constructed, modern facility takes those issues into account and requires less staffing to achieve the same number of beds while keeping the deputy safer. In addition, less contact with deputies also reduces issues with respect to disease transmission, something we've certainly experienced in 2020. And while people have varying opinions as to how dangerous COVID-19 was, and we're not here to debate that, one thing that's beyond debate is that the two types of facilities that were hardest hit, where we saw the most deaths and serious illnesses, were eldercare facilities and prisons, because those are intense spaces with at-risk populations. And if we can construct a facility that minimizes disease transmission, we're not just reducing risk of violence. We're not just saving money. We're saving lives by, in pandemic situations, reducing transmissible events, which is critically important to do. We should take what happened in 2020 seriously, that jails were so hard-hit, that prisons were so hard-hit by COVID-19. There's a reason for that. We crammed people together in spaces that were too small. We don't want that unhealthy situation. And while no one is going to get sued for what happened in 2020, the lawyer-in-law professor in me is thinking, you knew that there was a substantial risk of disease transmission based on the statistics of 2020, and what steps did you take to ameliorate this problem? It was discussed at public meetings. It's on the record. I'm reading the minutes. There was a law professor talking to you about it, and you did nothing. I don't want that lawsuit, but more than that, I don't want people to die unnecessarily because we're not taking these things into account. I understand that many of us didn't think about disease transmission in jails and prisons before 2020, but now it's time to think about it. So I just want to add, that's another benefit to having a modern layout. Yes, it saves money, and the budgeter in me loves that. It protects our deputies, and we have to do that. It's our commitment to do that. It protects inmates. It also reduces disease transmission. I really don't see why we haven't started talking about this sooner, but now is the
You good?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to throw a few things out here in no particular order, but I'll try to organize things. Commissioner Young, I appreciate your investing personal time in doing a tour of the building, making some phone calls, doing some internet research. I feel obligated to say that, speaking for myself, I was a technician in the telecommunications department when this building was being commissioned. Our sheriff, I believe you were sergeant back in the day, worked your way up. You're now sheriff. Captain Brooks, I believe you have 30 years?
37.
37. I missed a memo. 37 years. An exemplary career. A leader. And I believe, you know, we hear the word expert used an awful lot here. Our experts are sitting right here before us, not the people on the other end of the phone in Columbus. But let's set that aside. We've called this work session for the purpose of Lake County Jail Planning and Finance Work Session. I think we've exhaustively talked about the finance side of this. I'm encouraged to hear that if this facility could be constructed with no additional taxes, that you can see that that's a big leap. That's good. But let's talk about the planning side of it. Let's set the numbers aside. You know, you're looking at a point in time. You're looking at actuals. I get that. Let's just accept that you're at a perpetual distance on that. Let's just accept that on the finance side, that's a matter subject to fair debate. I think we've spent enough time on that. I would like to go over a few statements, and I'm going to kind of give them to you a little bit of time because I hate it when somebody peppers you with 10,000 questions and doesn't give you a chance to respond to anything because I don't believe that's fair. And I've also been asked several times, why are you investing so much time in Commissioner Young? And I've even said this to you. You represent a constituency in Lake County. Your position represents a constituency, a group of people in Lake County. Those questions, from your perspective, deserve to be asked and answered. This is the venue where we can have discussions, deliberations. There are no decisions that are going to be made. This is all part of that openness, transparency, and that's why we've initiated this effort. All discussion needs to be made in this public venue. One of the things you'd mentioned was, I believe, words to the effect of meeting all the standards. I would ask, what about the mental health treatment, addiction treatment, general medical care? And I would add this, you know, because this is one of the things that comes up an awful lot, you know, all this with consideration for work release and taking place in a safe, stable location. And I'm also add, this is a humane issue. These are the kind of things that need to be factored in, but they're not being taken care of. There's no, there is no dedicated space for these activities, and there is no available space to be reprogrammed for that purpose. I think that's something that needs to be considered, you know. We are in a time when these are issues that need to be taken care of. The recidivism rate, let's talk about the opioid crisis in this context. How many times do people come in, receive time to clean up, dry out? They get out, and they die because of an overdose. The reason they die because of an overdose, their body has adjusted to not having those chemicals in their system. They go out, they take the same dose, they overdose and die. Is it fair that that's, can we agree that this should be discussed, that these elements, these programmed spaces are important to be addressed? Is that a reasonable statement?
Sure, absolutely.
So in your calculations, have you considered these items? And I have to ask, because this is the proper venue for this. I would love to catch you in the hallway and say, hey, have you thought about, you know, where are we at with getting facilities where the Ados Board would be able to have a place where they could point and say, hey, we can invest in this program, you know, those types of things? I just, I need to hear that there's some deeper thought to this rather than a one-time tour of the jail and some phone calls to some unnamed people and an internet search. I need to know that there's depth. The public needs to know that there's depth to this.
Well, those are things we've all talked about with the sheriff. And the sheriff is aware of those programs, and he's helping to guide people into those programs.
That sounds like something I would expect from Columbus, but Sheriff, is there adequate facilities in that building? And are there places that could be rededicated? I believe the answer is no.
No.
Yeah.
So, okay. So we know that we can't do it. Okay.
Well, I think, how are we handling that now, Sheriff?
We have people dying.
Are we, are a lot of our people dying over there?
Ask the coroner.
At, in expanded use, probably our medical area.
Your microphone, sir.
Our medical area for the jail would probably be, if you had to get a space-wise, is from Jason Boyd here to that wall.
Yeah.
It's a very small, inadequate to handle the medical care or to handle special. Our mental health program has no space. They move around from cell to cell rather than have adequate areas to meet with individuals with severe mental illness. The psychiatrist that comes in to treat people who are psychiatrically impaired, who also present a danger to society, that's why they're in that facility, has to work in that small medical area where somebody's getting examined on the table while they're talking and trying to treat somebody with psychiatric illness directly in front of them. The drug and alcohol treatment program has no adequate space. There is no adequate space for GED programming, for church services, for a multitude of services. If we were to look to improve our facility and look at that physical plant moving forward, we would build areas that can meet those needs to return people back to society better than when they first came to us. As well, there's 20 police departments in Lake County. When they have to have people seen in court, they're pulling police officers out of those communities to come, pick them up in jail, take them to court, bring them back from court, and that could be quite a few hours doing that. What COVID-20 taught us is the ability to use the internet to do hearings. We have no space. We have a space probably the size of this little area here that we do video arraignments. If we were able to expand and put video arraignments in proper areas for the judges to be able to use, we could keep our law enforcement in the community, patrolling the neighborhoods and keeping them safer rather than hauling people back and forth to jail. So in answer to, we have adequate space, and how are we doing it now? We're using closets and basically small areas to try to do those things.
You know, when we had our meeting, of course, you were there, Sheriff, and I recommended that we could consider building a separate building, a smaller building, just for those services. The comment was, well, we don't have that level of need. It's a smaller population, et cetera. Maybe my memory doesn't serve me well.
I don't recall.
But that's what I recall. It would be a separate facility, though. So I can understand reservations there. It'd be better to have it all under one roof, perhaps. So that does make sense. And having visited with you there, I was impressed that the space is limited when it comes to these additional programs.
Captain Brooks continually works on that programming. In fact, some of the things that she has designed to address those areas, in fact, one of the things that the public defender was talking about, if you want to explain what you're doing in the community with that.
Yes, we have the Lake County Reentry Coalition. Not sure if you've heard about it, but all of the things that Vanessa was talking about, that's what the coalition is doing and working on. It's been slow because of COVID. We're starting to pick it up again, but we try to get inmates before they're released. We have a discharge plan for those that want it. We try to get driver's license or birth certificates, social security cards, housing, you know, whatever the need may be. The Reentry Coalition helps them with that. And there's also a coordinator for that, and her job is to come and meet with the inmates, usually six weeks, then four weeks, then two weeks before they get out.
That's excellent.
In your presentation, you mentioned the roof and the plumbing, and I appreciate your recognizing that those are serious deficiencies, areas of concern. But I'm going to refer back to some other, you know, the reports, activities, and discussions. The electrical system, again, we talk and we hear a lot of references to experts. The manufacturer of the electrical systems, the panels, the switches, the main, we'll call it the guts, if you will, per floor for the building. The manufacturer has declared the equipment obsolete. The support, limited at best. There's some aftermarket materials to replace this equipment. To current standards, six to 10 million dollars. That's not debatable. That's a reality. And it's kind of like doing heart surgery while the heart is still beating. I don't know how we would be able to replace those electrical systems floor by floor in an occupied space. That's just something that needs to be talked about. Just keep that in the back of your mind and give a little thought to. Access control. There's two extremes. There's the individual controls that used to go through some programmable controllers, which, again, were essentially obsolete when they were installed, that have been now replaced with manual push buttons in the control rooms. And then on the other extreme, you've And then on the other extreme, you've got your radio frequency activated proximity access control, which is more sophisticated. But we're looking at, a lot of diligence went into that, because there was a time when the county proactively purchased all of the access cards, because the old system, literally, the manufacturer had gone out of business. The availability was limited. They stretched that as far as they could, but we've been having to make investments. So, we have two extremes. We have literally dry contact push buttons and a similar system to that, which we have in this building. And I think we've standardized on throughout the county as best we could. Again, economy of scale, we're doing the best we can. Cell doors and the locking systems. The cell doors, in some cases, are literally falling off. The frames are falling out. The locking systems, the locks themselves, they've got these giant skeleton keys. I'm exaggerating a little bit about calling it a skeleton key, but it is a substantial key. Those are well over $1,000 apiece, if you can get the parts, which you cannot. And we've scrounged up as much as possible from other facilities and providers. But we have nothing left. Did you want to maybe talk about literally the danger of having doors falling off? Or is that pretty apparent?
Well, we've had inmates in locked security cells kick the door.
Microphone, please, I'm sorry.
We've had recent inmates who are in high-security housing areas, kick the door and break the lock in half as the door swings open. And then they're into a free-rein environment, because the metal has deteriorated. Again, minimum, minimum requirements when it was built, but not certainly what you'd want to base it on.
And some of those areas that that person would then have access to are the ad hoc areas where the, I shouldn't say deputies, the corrections officers, other staff have had to take up quarters in hallways because of limited space, the potential for someone to have improvised devices that they could use for bad things, if I can keep it clean. It's a very high real risk, not only to themselves, but to others. So, I just want to keep that in, again, in your calculations as you're thinking. Again, I'm working hard to win you over on this.
Well, let me just, if that's the case. Again, it's just so frustrating to hear all these things. The doors are falling off, locks are all rusted out, et cetera. People are, you know, wandering hallways. And yet, when the state comes up to inspect, unlike other facilities, nothing is mentioned. It's, I don't know what makes us, what makes us so unique.
The state does not come in and do state inspections by reviewing your mechanical systems, your physical structure. They come in to see, are you complying with the minimum jail standards of policies and procedures? Do you have adequate square footage? And they simply take a measure of square footage. They bring in a light meter and say, is there adequate lighting? Outside that, nothing else is done in a state inspection, unless people die. Then they come in, oh, you probably should have noticed this. The state inspected the Cleveland Jail for the past 15 years and passed the Cuyahoga County Jail for the past 15 years. Yet, during that time, we'll see, you see what, how it operated. So, you can't rely on the state jail inspectors to give you an adequate base as to where your facility lies physically.
Yeah, that's, you're right. But at the same time, I mean, to a point, I believe. But if you just read the inspection reports from Asher Bula, for instance, you know, it's clear they're talking about the facility in many cases. And, you know, the age and layout of the existing facility did not allow them to have a secure booking and release area. The age and layout of the facility does not provide two-way communication system, does not provide adequate lighting. It's all related to the facility, the age and layout of the facility problems. What they told me was that unless there is a threat to the security.
Who's "they," if I may ask?
The rehab and corrections group that comes up and does the inspections. Unless there is a threat to the actual security of the jail, they don't get involved in it. So, I think you're right in the sense, they don't look at the structure of the building, they don't look at the piping. But they said if the jail points out that they're having a problem in this arena, then they will take a look at it and it will show up on the inspection report. So, if we, if we don't.
The state will not provide us any money to build a facility. It doesn't matter what they say, their view of what it is. We have to go to our experts in our county and say, this is where we're at. To rely on the state, here's what I was told by the state of Ohio. Every time we go to them, ask for anything, they say, you're not as bad as 90% of the places. You guys do it too well, so don't come ask us for money.
What they're telling me is that, for the reports themselves, if they hear from the prison, that the prison is having a problem.
It's a jail, not a prison, that's a very specific term.
Okay, the jail. If they hear from the jail that there's a specific problem, then by golly, they will take a look at that problem and it will show up on the inspection report, if indeed they agree that there is a problem area there. The problem with Lake County, if there is, if there is any kind of a problem we can talk about with Lake County is that you guys are so damn quiet about any problems that you have. You just, apparently, you're not really using them as a tool. There are, I mean, maybe they are true tools, in a sense of the word, in the negative sense. But they claim they're ready to offer a service to Lake County. But Lake County needs to describe the problems they're having. And then they'll take a look at those specific problems and give us consultative advice as to how to move forward.
Mr. President, I just want to make an observation. What the sheriff had said in response to our collective questions about, well, what does Ohio Department of Corrections looks at? He said, they take a light meter, and they check the light, and they look at the square footage. And, you know, I want to point out that Commissioner Young, I want to point out that you just read us a report where they say, the square footage is insufficient and the lighting is insufficient. You're literally seeing exactly what the sheriff is describing.
Well, I read more than that.
And you've pointed out that, you know, the sheriff hasn't tried to use the Department of Corrections as a resource. But I think what, I think what Sheriff Liam Bruno is sharing with us is, him complaining to the Department of Corrections only has a negative possible consequence, in the sense that it creates potential liability for the county in a lawsuit if there's a bad report. It could require an expensive repair or upgrade that might not be necessary immediately, but there's no chance of additional funding. So, to some extent, complaining to the Ohio Department of Corrections has serious negatives, but no positives. And so, using them as a resource may not be the right way of looking at it, because creating a record that your jail is dangerous or out of shape never serves the jail. Instead, it's a more positive use of time to try to address the real needs, as opposed to getting a bad report. I'm trying to understand, is there any reason you'd want a bad report from the Ohio Department of Corrections?
No.
Well, I think, I don't think you're thinking your way through this, Professor. The reality is that if we don't point out that we recognize there's a problem and we're trying to deal with it, then certainly when you stand before a judge someday and the judge says, clearly you had this problem. Everyone in the organization was aware that the roof was leaking, there were problems with the electrical systems, the doors were falling off, and yet, you never confided in any of the state experts. Instead, you brought in your own experts to sort of privately tell you that there's this problem out there. And yet, you still didn't really deal with the problem. I don't think that you're, it follows logically what you're saying. But it doesn't sound as if, at this point, you're willing to take advantage of a free service offered by state experts. That's your call. I disagree, and I'll disagree very aggressively on that. But go right ahead. John, you were in the middle of a presentation.
No, no, I'm just, I'm trying to work with you, because I, again, I value your position and those who you represent. Now, to the sheriff, though, I have to say, and I'm going to take exception, Commissioner Pletchnik, I don't believe that there's any desire to hide or conceal anything from reports. I'm going to say, I'm also a state licensed contractor, so I understand how you do inspection reports. We do them professionally. Some might even call me an expert in that industry. Yes, that was meant to be a little poke in the ribs. It's outside the scope of the state. When they're coming here to have these discussions, they're not inspecting the rain screen. They're not inspecting the roofing. They're not inspecting the structural steel. It's outside their scope.
That's true.
So, I just wanted to get that as part of the record of this discussion, that in no way do I personally believe anyone is attempting to conceal anything at all. And I appreciate that, but I, and I don't know that that's what you were trying to say, but it sounded like that. So, I just wanted to be abundantly clear on that. But getting back on point to some of the things which I don't, which were not mentioned, but are actually mentioned in some of these other facilities, you know, the discussion about two-way communications. That's also known as an intercom system. Our intercom system, from the day it was installed, and I know I was one of the grunts pulling the wires in, because the company went out of business and we got stuck dealing with it. And I believe the sheriff wound up, I'm sorry, then, now sheriff, then sergeant, wound up programming many of the systems to get that building commissioned, because we were jumping through our ears trying to get this place commissioned. That intercom system is in failure. It's at end of service life. And we need to make some decisions. Are we going to do some short-term fixes? Or are we going to do some long-term, very expensive fixes? So, we've got a lot of cost there. You know, we talk about the exterior of the building. It's a rain screen, it's the facade. The International Masonry Institute offered to come and do a free review. There's a reason why they're referred to as international. They set many standards. I will admit, the building was in bad shape. There were sections of the building as big as a car that were threatening to fall off. The retaining devices had rusted through and failed. Water had gotten behind the exterior of the building, but not the interior. So, that envelope, as it freezes, we all know what water does, it expands. We literally had to section off sections of the sidewalk, the front area, sides of the building. It wasn't too long ago, I believe it was in the, out towards Toledo, out towards the islands, there was a section of building that had collapsed, the exterior, and I believe killed some people. There's other parts of the country where, I don't want to use the word facade, but for the sake of this discussion, falling, collapsing, killing people. It's not uncommon for people on the outside to be standing there, getting the attention of inmates in areas where they were in serious threat. We spent well over, I believe, $100,000, I'm going to look over to Mike Matus, for a professional engineering company that does that, to review the structure while they had it opened. We needed to know if we had good bones or if we had bad bones. If they were, if this was a rotted building, we need to know it. They also made immediate repairs to sections of the building that were an obvious failure. You know, that was some of the tuck pointing, but that was, it goes beyond tuck pointing, where actual sections of the building were removed, attachment systems were retrofitted and put in place. But that's a strong indicator that the rest of the building has issues. So, when we say that there was poor design, poor construction, our predecessors did a terrible job with that building. I cannot overemphasize, that building was obsolete the day we took possession of it. It was the end of, I'm just going to call it, the incarceration detention model. I cannot overemphasize, treatment and rehabilitation wasn't even conceived of then. And everything that went into this building, every, seems like every corner that could be cut was. And it's frustrating having to go back and deal with that. But when you've got sections of the building threatening to fall off, and, you know, we're all kind of scanning that building as we all look by. Several times I've looked at Jason, when you see shadows, it's like, hey, what's going on there? Because the shadowing could be an indicator of something bulging, something coming out of position. So, when you see a shadow in a place you wouldn't expect, you would have to lay eyes on that. So, that's something important. Something else to consider, the wastewater coming out of that facility going to Pansyl City for the sewers. We actually have to go to a holding tank to separate out solids. Now, you might ask, well, why would you do that? Well, when you've got blankets, shoes and other materials, city of Pansyl is not going to be real happy when you start plugging up their sewer mains. We have to have that pumped at least monthly. There's a, there's a regular maintenance. Modern facilities will have what's called a grinder, where that stuff is ground down. Usually on the front end of a wastewater treatment plant, there's a screening and grinding system to protect the plant. This would be to protect the collection system. We don't have that. And to retrofit something like that is incredibly cost prohibitive. And I don't believe we even have the space for it in front of that building, because Route 20 is right there. So, again, just keeping that in the back of your mind.
Johnny, I'm not opposed to building a new building, if we can do without a tax increase. And everything you're saying, I'm sure, I know you, none of this is inaccurate. And it would cost a lot of money to bring the building up to snuff again. So, I understand that.
And I appreciate that. And as I'm speaking to you, I'm also speaking to your constituency, because we, if we're going to make decisions, these decisions have to come from an informed position. And I'm going to use the word bias where you're concerned. You are biased insofar as, well, if it doesn't cost you anything, we can do it. I have, I have to look at the needs first.
That's an exaggeration.
That's an exaggeration, but it's an exaggeration, though, for explanatory purposes. And it's, it's a fair statement, and this is, this is the venue where we can have this discussion.
It's not a fair statement. I realize it'll cost money.
With, but the public has a right to know all of the factors that are going into this. The generator.
They have a right to know the money's going to come out of their pocket if we have to increase taxes. But go right ahead.
No, no, and that's fair. It's, it is the people's money, but we also have a responsibility to provide a safe facility that allows for our justice system to not only perform, but to humanely treat the people that are in this building.
Well, then bring in experts that don't cost anything to at least take a look at it.
And continuing, so we have a generator that not so many years ago, we did a refit on the engine. There was a problem with something called wet stacking. That's where you run a generator. Generators like to be run close to full load. That generator was not. That generator is reaching the end of its service life for the insulation on the generator itself, similar to the emergency operations center. But I don't know if this is a good candidate to be even considered to be taken out for a refit and put back in, because of the constraints of where it got shoehorned into the building. I'm not even sure we could get that thing out of there. It, it's mind-boggling the way this, I mean, they look like they literally built a generator, run around the generator. I don't know what, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional here, but I can't imagine what rocket scientist had a hand in that. But if that generator were to fail, there is no fusing on the generator windings themselves. The ensuing fire and threat to safety forces would be incredible. The size of that generator would cause an electrical fire of epic proportions. I know we have systems to control and try to contain and do, but you would have a building that if that generator is up and running, you have no electricity. You have no backup power, because the generator is offline, and you're relying on batteries for emergency lighting. That's a crisis situation. And we also have an obligation to protect the people who are in that building. Not just the staff, but the people who are in there. All these things need to be factored into this consideration. And I have not heard any of these conversations come up. Again, I've talked about this building, you know, we talk about the age, the layout of the existing facility. Again, I have to emphasize, it was obsolete the day the doors opened. I've already mentioned, but it's worth mentioning again, it was designed around an incarceration detention model with no provisions for treatment or rehab. You know, I don't believe, and I do believe the sheriff did mention this, I don't believe proper credit is being given to our courts. Our courts are being incredibly creative. We've had those in the public. We've had those in the public who've pointed out a number of things in graduate jail reform. I take comfort in knowing that as we develop and as our information through discovery comes out, I think they're going to be pleasantly surprised that our courts are doing many of the things that they would like to see done. I can say with absolute certainty, for example, Judge Lucci, his court will be part of the unified, okay, I'm going to try to get this right, unified sentencing system being sponsored by the Ohio Supreme Court. That's one of the highest bits of praise when you're a court that's being trusted with something like that. But there's more to it. Judge O'Donnell was on the steering committee that created the standards by which that pilot program is being handled. We truly have some of the finest judges and the finest staff in our courts in Ohio. And I, I believe they, they deserve to be recognized for that. Let's see, I apologize, my handwriting sometimes gets a little scribbly. Obviously, there needs to be a little bit more depth and discussion. I appreciate your desire for experts, but I can't declare somebody an expert just because they come from the state. I, I have to say that, I'm sorry, what's screaming in my head, and I realize we're all government employees, but it's screaming, hi, I'm here from the government, we're here to help. You know, Lake County, our building inspector, he has a saying, help not hinder. I can't tell you how many times we've had some challenges. If we do a refit on this building, I call it a refit because a simple rebuilding is not as simple as just fixing some plumbing and putting a roof on, we're going to have to be rebuilt at the current, current state building standards. The ADA component alone, I don't even know if we can get there from here, because the way the building was designed, it predated ADA. There is no grandfathering for ADA, we've had to make a number of reasonable accommodations, I believe one of the phrases in the trade is invalid assist, where you have to physically muscle somebody around to help them out. You have to provide equal access, and if you can't, you have to make reasonable accommodations to give them that. I'm just trying to go through this whole list. You know, we talked about the workforce. One of our largest costs is not necessarily the brick and mortar, it's the ongoing cost of staffing. And that's, that's, that's just not going to go away. But here's a big one. More than once, the state has threatened to return felony four and felony five back to county jails. What do we do? When that first came up a year or two ago, we would have been overwhelmed overnight, overwhelmed. Right now, that is a battle taking place in Columbus right now. County Commission Association, on behalf of all of our counties, is fighting to say you will, you already acknowledged that you have problems with jail facilities at county levels. They're fighting with the state, because this is an example of the state unburdening their system, those are the prisons, if I'm using the right terminology, those are the prisons, shifting that load back to county jails. Lake County would not be the only one overwhelmed, but this would be devastating, devastating. And I, I don't know if that's factoring into your calculations. And everything has a cost, everything has a cost. And I'll tell you what, if those felony four and felony five show up, we can't exactly, what's that sheriff out west, I don't think we can do a tent city at the landfill, can we? That's probably a really bad idea. And you know, the suggestion of using hotels, we don't have hall monitors, we have corrections officers, so we can't do that. That's where the long-range planning, as the sheriff is talking about, that's where, again, these types of discussions are real and substantive. We need to talk about things we can agree on. I, I know that the numbers seem to be in flux, I know the, how are we going to pay for, but there are specific things that the public has a right to know that have to be addressed. And that, that's, I'd like to throw those out there. And sheriff, have I indicated deficiencies that weren't accurate?
Other than.
Thank you. So, you know, we've gone over a number of things, I have, in the interest of time, I'll forego some of my other comments and questions, but where, where do we go here next? Now, you know, Commissioner Young has indicated the state as a resource, the state as experts. In your professional opinion, have they been of value, have they shown interactions with other places, or are we putting too much value on an unknown quantity here? I, I'm just curious, can you maybe shed some light to help support Commissioner Young's position, or refute the claim?
In terms of the field.
Microphone, please, I'm so sorry.
In terms of the field, I have not talked to other, any other jail facilities or sheriff's offices that have found that beneficial. Their benefit has come from their own studies that they're willing to, to commit to and pay to have that done. We've had a 2013 study, a 2014 study, a 2019 study. At some point, they, what's consistent is they all say the same thing, in terms of the physical structure.
Are they all from the same organization, K2M?
K2M has done two of those studies in 2014 and 2019.
And then you have a third, who was the third one?
The, I'll have to look at that. The other study that was done was the Mason.
International Masonry Institute.
As well as companies that have come into our facility to do reworks on what we have have talked about the deficiencies in the building.
I don't think that would be necessary. So, to the sheriff's point, we did have an outside company, Jason, Mike, do you recall the name of the company that did the?
I think that the firm, the firm that looked at the masonry and took some samples out, as you indicated, Commissioner Hammercheck, I believe was Technical Assurances.
That sounds right, thank you.
And I believe they're a Lake County firm, I believe out of Willoughby. So yeah, Technical Assurances, and then an outfit we've used sporadically by the name of Garland has taken a look at the roof a number of times. Those are the two other studies top of mind for me.
Okay. Mr., well, if I just, at the risk of offending our friends at the state in communications with fellow commissioners, County Commissioner's Association, I'll, I'm going to go out on a limb and say something maybe the sheriff can't say. Our colleagues throughout the state refer to the state as being worthless. For them to say that they don't know about our consideration, they do know, because we did submit well over a year ago for consideration, which was one of the foundational data points that resulted in the $50 million being allocated to the biannual, which is 25 million per. Lake County was one of the counties that participated and gave them the data point. So for them to say they don't have the information about challenges and issues is a false factual statement, otherwise called a lie. So if you can hear some irritation in my voice.
What are you, what are you talking about?
You have been bamboozled, the people you were talking to are not giving you accurate information. They knew, they know we have problems. They know we have problems, they know we have challenges.
And how do they know that, again?
We submitted information to them in regards to the cost of a facility, be it rehab.
Who did you present?
If I may finish my statement, sir.
Well, just tell me who you presented it to.
Jason.
Yes, sir.
You did, you did the filing.
I believe we worked with sheriff, you might have helped me on this, the Buckeye Sheriff's Association and CCao, as they were looking at across the state of Ohio, the potential public need for dollars for jail, county jails. So I think it was a combination of CCao, Buckeye Sheriff's Association, sheriff, is that accurate?
Correct. And they were working closely with our legislators in Columbus, as well as state officials.
I don't think they worked directly with rehab and corrections.
Well, that $50 million number didn't get plugged in out of the air.
You're assuming that, and that's, that's fine. Go right ahead.
That's not an assumption, sir, but thank you.
Well, you know they worked with rehab and corrections? Or are you assuming that?
I don't particularly like being questioned like this, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll just do what you like, then. What would you like me to do? Just be quiet now, all right? You go right ahead.
My point, sir, is that the $50 million didn't magically appear in the state budget because our legislator was feeling generous. As I had indicated, one of the data points that they used was the Lake County analysis for a refit and expansion of the existing facility, or a new replacement. Those numbers made it into their calculations. Therefore, that is my evidence that they had the information. It didn't magically appear in their minds because the Holy Spirit said, ta-da!
But rehab and corrections doesn't analyze each budget ask from each legislator throughout the state, I can guarantee you that.
We seem to be talking potentially about two different things. Those data points were presented as an immediate need, of which southern Ohio, because of neglect, and I question competency, and lack of local support elevated them up higher, which is where one of the other $50 million concerns is where those dollars are likely to go, because we have worked diligently to try to maintain the facility we have in the best possible way possible for safety and application. We've actually been penalized, so just adding that to the conversation. Do you believe that it would be worth having further conversation with the state on this to satisfy Commissioner Young? I, I think it might be worth a call, but I, I am somewhat, and I'll look to legal on this, Commissioner Young has expressed an interest in working with, if they were to come up to do a review, I also would like to be involved, but obviously, I'm concerned about the potential for conflict, the potential for discussions and deliberations, but if you could be our chaperone maybe while this is going on, and I'm looking for a way that we could do this. I believe I have a certain degree of expertise, so I just want to make sure.
Commissioner, again, you, quorum, if they were together, two commissioners, could attend an informational meeting, ask questions, receive answers, do not discuss and deliberate amongst yourselves, meaning the two commissioners.
So as long as we maintain discipline, that shouldn't be a problem, we could both be accommodated.
Okay.
I just want to be clear on that right up front, again, in public.
I appreciate you exploring that.
No, that, again, it means a great deal to me.
It means a great deal to me that we would at least listen to what folks who are recognized, maybe they're not folks we would be the first we'd turn to, but that are recognized, the ones that do determine if a facility's overcrowded, the ones that do determine if improvements need to be made, the ones that do cite the jails throughout the state if there's a problem. I think that we should at least hear what they have to say. So, and I appreciate your exploring that.
Fair enough. And Commissioner Pletchnik, you've been very patient.
Mr. President, the point that I want to make, going back to the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, is I feel that there's a misunderstanding as to what their role is. Their role is to enforce minimum standards for jails, and unfortunately, there are counties that fail those minimum standards. We've already discussed how a failure to meet minimum standards is catastrophic, but even meeting those standards is not necessarily acceptable, and jails that have met those standards in the past have had deaths, violence, harm to both officers and inmates. And so, I certainly recognize, and I don't think we should be criticizing the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, I have confidence that they're doing the job they're given, which is to enforce the minimum standards to make sure that jails do not cross that critical line. But it's our job to consider more than that when we're talking about the safety of our deputies and our inmates. So this is not me questioning their expertise, I just don't want to misunderstand their role. I think they do an excellent job of measuring the light level in the building, of determining the square footage, of taking a snapshot of populations and saying, does this jail catastrophically fail what a jail should be? Does it meet the minimum standard or not? I don't think the service that they provide is to say, is this jail optimal for your community? What's the useful life of the building? What's the cost of its maintenance? So, I'm not objecting to you and Commissioner Young talking to the Ohio Department of Corrections or touring the jail with them, but I think what they'll tell you is, let me get out my light pen, lighting's okay, I can Google the square footage on your jail, based on the snapshot population today, that's enough, but they're not going to tell you, here's what your population will likely be over the next 10 years, they're not going to predict the useful life of the building. So I think that they can give you some answers, but they will not answer the fundamental question of, is it more fiscally responsible to refit the building, to use your term, Mr. President, or to build a new one? I don't think that's the service that Ohio Corrections provides. And as we hear the reports, in Commissioner Young's summary, they're talking about square footage and lighting. I also want to say, with respect to the reports, I know that it's the role of our deputies to use the jail they're given to have the best possible result. Not that they're fooling Ohio Corrections, but that they're going above and beyond to keep the inmates and their colleagues safe, but they're coming to us and saying, we're reaching the breaking point, we're doing the best we can with what we have, we've managed to maintain to this point, but if we have an influx due to greater population, more law enforcement activity post-COVID, F4 felons being rerouted to county jails, if for whatever reason, we take in another 10, 20 inmates, that could cross the safety line tomorrow. And I think we need to listen to that, because Ohio Corrections is here to say, do you have a catastrophic failure in your jail or not? Congratulations, we don't today. But I don't think that they're going to give us the more detailed answer as to what's the most fiscally responsible option. I think they're going to affirmatively tell us, I can't answer that question. I don't think they're going to be willing to, frankly, because I don't believe that's their role.
Your perspective is interesting. Number one, they've changed over the years, no longer minimum standards. And what they inspect for, the standards they inspect for focus on reception and release, classification, security, housing, sanitation, environmental conditions, communication, visitation, medical, mental health, food service, recreation, programming, inmate discipline, administrative segregation, grievance, staffing, staff training. So it's, it's a fairly extensive view of jail operations. But I have heard that term used in the past, minimum standards. It, it goes fairly far back.
Microphone, please.
Commissioner, the revised code is, is, is the Ohio minimum jail standards, they are the Ohio minimum jail standards. If you go to the Ohio Administrative Code for jails is the Ohio minimum jail standards. And that's exactly what they are, and what you just listed is what they've been looking at for years. There are myriads of Ohio minimum jail standards, historically, they would come in, do a cursory overview, and take, would you say, 20, 20 of the 163 standards and review them in depth, usually looking at medical standards and, and usually food service. But they've been reviewing those for the past 30 years, and they still are the Ohio minimum jail standards.
They still are today?
Yes, sir.
Joel told, Joel told me otherwise.
Well, we just called them the standards for jails in Ohio. They were revised in 2014 to meet the standards of a jail instead of a prison.
I see, okay. So it's been, they were revised.
How forward to you the revised code that lists Ohio minimum jail standards?
So it's still in the code, it's still minimum jail standards?
Yes.
I see, okay. Well, what they're, what they, they're telling us in the world now is that it's no longer minimal standards. But regardless, the scope of what they inspect for is pretty broad. Now, I'm sure you're right, sheriff, that each time they don't inspect for all 163. But, so it's randomly selective, I take it? Yeah. Do they tell you in advance what they'll be inspecting for? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, good. All righty.
For the benefit of all, could you please cite your source there, please?
I'm reading from an inspection report of 2015 at the Lake County Adult Detection Facility, Detention Facility.
Okay, so, in addition to planning, one of the things we need to be discussing that will directly impact the financing model is the delivery systems. We need to give due consideration, we had a... We had a complimentary tutorial that kind of broke the ice a little bit to educate us as to what delivery systems are lawful, which would be the most effective, efficient. One of the ways to cut costs is through efficiency. Time is money. And a delivery system that allows movement that's responsive to workforce availability, materials, and customer needs for that customer makes all the sense in the world. To Commissioner Young's point, we did have a presentation, there's also a part two to that, from Jeffrey Applebaum, I believe is the proper pronunciation. He is the authority in the state of Ohio on delivery systems. In fact, he is the author of the legislation, so I don't think we need to look any further. He is actually a Lake County resident, too, by the way, so I hope that won't disqualify him. I'm just trying to do a little friendly poke in the ribs. I hope that doesn't disqualify him, because he'll save some tax dollars here, too. I think we would be well-served to avail ourselves of that tutorial. And again, I'd like to invite the sheriff and Legal to sit in with us as we do an informational meeting on that, given, I don't believe that would be public, given some of the technical and potential security concerns, and that it would be discussed and addressed. I'm looking to Legal on that, but...
Well, it depends on the detail that he gets into, quite frankly. Delivery systems, that's not, that would be public, but...
I'm only questioning the security, because we're going to start getting into more detail about the programming of space.
Okay, so if you're talking about layouts...
Yeah, programming of space, that's, and I'm going to look to the sheriff on that, because now I think we're at that point where we start talking about programming of space and how that gets factored into the architecture and what would be considered. And that's at no cost, that was offered at no cost. I don't think there's any exposure to the community on that, it's our time.
I'd be open to, as long as we brought in the state as well.
Well, I really want to vet what value we're going to get from the state before I would even consider agreeing to that, but I think we've got before...
Well, I'm saying with this situation, that I want to know more about what value we get.
Would you have time to reach out to the state to find out what, you know, kind of an explanation of services? I think they probably must have some kind of a palette at that.
Yeah, Captain Brooks will make those contacts.
And then maybe we could have a report at our next commissioner meeting? I think that would be appropriate at a commissioner meeting. We could have that under old business, new business.
I'd want to meet with them, I mean, in person. They said they'd be willing to come up. I think it'd be best if we actually had to sit down with them rather than a proxy making the call and then getting back to us with some sort of a report, I guess? Is that what you're suggesting?
I, and with all due respect, I believe Captain Brooks, as a jail administrator with 37 years' experience, would know what questions need to be asked. I think, I think, I think her knowledge exceeds both you and I combined.
I don't think she, I don't think she knows what my questions are.
Well, if...
I think it'd be best...
Excuse me, I didn't have the gavel, but I have the floor. Please be silent.
We're having a discussion, John.
No, sir, I'm trying to talk to Captain Brooks, and out of respect to Captain Brooks and her expertise...
Well, you go ahead and talk to her then, I'll be quiet.
Captain Brooks.
And don't slam the desk like that.
I couldn't find the gavel, and the other option I had was turning your microphone off.
John, don't even suggest that.
We're all commissioners here.
Just did, by the way.
John, we are all commissioners here.
Commissioner...
Control yourself.
Commissioner Young, you are being insightful unnecessarily.
Okay.
You are being disrespectful to Captain Brooks, and I find that to be utterly intolerable.
I'm disrespectful to you, Captain, I apologize.
Mr. President?
Sir.
If I could just say, could we all just take a deep breath?
Thank you, sir. Good counsel, sir. Captain Brooks, so, are you okay with reaching out to the state, talking to the authorities who we're discussing, getting some sort of a scope of what it is that they would offer? What are, because I believe in managing expectations.
Okay.
And managing expectations, I think, is essential to a successful outcome. Could you possibly have that for us for our next commissioner meeting next week?
Yes, I could do that.
There you go. That's all I wanted to finish saying.
Well, I'm not sure what's going on. Captain Brooks, what did you understand the assignment to be there?
Oh, sir, your microphone, I'm so sorry.
I can't.
No, but the people listening can't.
Okay.
I didn't hear the question.
What did you understand your assignment to be, or what is the request to be, I should say?
Contacting the state, Joel, who is my jail inspector.
Right.
And he also said he would bring the guy that's in charge of construction for the state. Is there anyone else that you would like at the meeting?
Well, I, obviously, the commissioners would be invited, and you could tell him what we want to discuss. You know, the question would be, what kind of an evaluation of the existing facility could they offer, if any?
Okay.
The condition, the need for replacement or not. Tell him what we're considering, you know, building a new facility.
Mm-hmm.
And if they feel they can offer some sort of input that might be, that might be meaningful.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so, circling back to delivery systems, I see no reason to delay in setting up a follow-up with Mr. Applebaum. I think that'd be, for educational purposes, be a good idea, and time is money. So, whatever we do, we can carry these things out in parallel. There's no reason to make one contingent upon the other. So, without objection, I think we should proceed with scheduling something.
What do you hope to learn from Applebaum, again? I didn't understand what you were suggesting before.
Delivery systems, how do we, if we were to choose to construct, if we were to choose to do an addition, if we were to choose to do a refit of the existing building, what are the lawful mechanisms by which we could perform that, and which one would give us the greatest effectiveness and efficiency with workforce, materials, and programming needs for the facility?
And who does Applebaum work for?
What's the name of...
He's a partner at the Thompson Hein Law Firm, and he also has a consultant business that he runs.
Hopefully, that satisfies that.
And you, deliverables, you're talking about the steps we'd have to take to achieve those different goals?
That, I believe, would be my takeaway from our first meeting, yes. What the steps would be as to who you'd want to have on your team, how you'd want to organize your team. It's very similar to the initiative that we took on the construction of this building. That was a construction manager risk model.
Commissioner, Mr. President, if I may...
Oh, please, sir, thank you.
Under the Revised Code, and I am not going to be a claim, claim to be an expert on the delivery method, but there are certain ways or methods by which you construct a public building or a public project, and Mr. Applebaum, he, I attended the one...
Is your microphone on, by the way? Okay.
I attended the one informational meeting, or his presentation, really, and I found him to be very impressive.
Mr. President?
Sir.
I think just that it's most basic level, what we're talking about is the bid requirement. We can't just purchase materials or services. What we're talking about, numbers is large, and so ultimately, everything we do at this level has to go out to bid, but there are different processes to go out to bid. You can have a construction manager, you can have a concept architect, you can have different organizations to go through the bid process, and some of them tend to be more efficient than others, but the reality is the Ohio Revised Code constrains how we go out to bid. So, Mr. Applebaum, you know, regardless of how we choose to address this, build a new jail, build three new jails, refit the old jail, the numbers are going to be well above bid limits, and so you have to decide which of the legally permissible ways you'd go through that bidding process. So, that's where Jeff Applebaum brings the expertise. It's about the bid process.
You know, thank you. Detective Brooks, which you might want to talk to...
Captain Brooks.
Captain Brooks, I'm sorry. But you might want to talk to Joel about also is the fact that apparently we're considering evaluating the bid process. Is that the way to phrase that?
Delivery system for the, the bid process is a few steps out. We need to find out what model we'd be doing before we would...
Okay, so we're exploring models for the bid process?
Again, delivery systems, sir, not bid process.
Okay, delivery systems.
Yes.
And we may want, and they'll have to be involved in this process at some point, I believe, if we're talking about building a new jail. So, they have to give us approvals, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think it'd be important to bring them into the process now.
Anything further?
You are correct. If we move forward on any type of jail building or remodel, the state has to be brought into that process and used in that. Going back to one other earlier point, the Administrative Code that says minimum jail standards, I can give you that, 5120, colon, 1 to 8, is the Ohio minimum jail standard wording.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
Commissioner Young, Mr. Pletchek, anything further?
Mr. President, I, my last comment would just be to thank Sheriff Liam Bruno and Captain Brooks and Chief Deputy Sherwood for joining us. I know that this was a very intensive, long conversation, and we're grateful for your commitment to making sure that all of our deputies, county employees, and inmates are safe and well-cared for. I know it's a day-to-day struggle, you're always working to it, and I just want to reexpress not just mine, but all of our commissioners' commitment to helping you as much as we can. We're never going to be in harm's way like you, but we appreciate the sacrifice that you're making for Lake County, and we appreciate you bringing your expertise to the table for something this important, because I do believe this is a project that is going to, that is going to go beyond each of our useful lives, if you will. This is something not just for today, but for the deputies and for Lake County residents that follow, and I think we're all taking this responsibility seriously, which is why the debate can sometimes have some fire to it, but we have a real passion to make sure this is done right, and I hope you know that we hold you all in the highest esteem, that our gratitude can't really be stated in words, but please, you know, understand we're grateful to you and we thank you.
Very good. Again, I will echo that. Thank you for your professionalism, and thank you for participating in this open discussion. If there's nothing further, anything from the team? Okay, then this work session I will call to a closing at, Jason, you want to call the time? 2:38, thank you. Thanks for joining us today.